Hey, welcome back, everybody.
Mayor Martinez, you sound a bit quiet.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, we're just gonna give our colleagues a minute to rejoin us. And, Madam City Clerk, just please note for the record that Mayor Medina joined us as soon as we started the closed session.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put 5:18.
And I'm gonna wait till Member Medina rejoins us before we before we report out of closed session, just in case she has any ex parte communications to report. All right, we are back, folks. Member Medina, before we report out of closed session, did you want to report any ex parte communications on the closed session agenda?
Nope.
Okay, great. So, um...
I don't see Member Pats back yet.
No, he said he'll be joining us in just a moment, but, um, I don't see... Is Andrea with us? Is she gonna report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, I'll do the report out.
Okay, very good. Your last report out, make it good.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the Emeryville City Council and the successor agency met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda. Items 5.1.1 through items 5.1.5, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.1.6, on a motion by Mayor Martinez, seconded by Member Medina, on a 5-0 vote, the city council authorized defense of this matter. Regarding item 5.1.7, on a motion by Member Medina, seconded by Vice Mayor Donahue on a 5-0 vote, the city council authorized defense of all parties on this matter. Regarding item 5.2.1 through 5.2.6, an update was provided. Regarding item 5.2.7, on a motion by Member Bowers, seconded by Mayor Martinez on a 5-0 vote, the council authorized denial of the claim. Regarding items 5.3.1, point 2, and point 3, an update was provided. On item 5.3.4, on a motion by Member Bowders, seconded by Vice Mayor Donahue on a 5-0 vote, the council authorized purchase of the unit. And then, on items 6.1.1 and 6.1.2, an update was provided, and that's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So that will adjourn this meeting at 6:43 PM. And, Madam Clerk, let me know when you're ready to roll on our next meeting, which is our special study session.
All right, we're ready to go.
All right, the time is 6:43 PM. We're just about 13 minutes behind, if you're following along on our agendas. This, I will call to order our special study session of the City of Emeryville City Council. And please bear with me while I read these introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as e-notification and on social media. At this time, I would like to turn to our City Clerk to please call the call.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of the final agenda.
I'm moved.
A second?
I have a motion for Member Bowers and a second for Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Next up is ex parte communications, and I can report that I've received emails and spoken to representatives from Unite Here Local 2850. Does anyone else have anything to report, Member Bowers?
Join the mayor in the meetings with Unite Here Local 2850.
Received the same emails.
Same email for me.
Same emails.
Very good. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, excuse me, should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the City Clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. And at this time, I will ask the City Clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have no comment cards, but I do see some hands raising, and I wonder if we should clarify that there will be, if there will be another public comment portion after the presentation.
There will. I will allow for public comment after the presentation, if folks would like to comment then so that they have seen the presentation, but I will also allow folks to comment now if they have time constraints. So, Madam City Clerk, if you could go ahead and call everyone in order. And speakers, you will have three minutes to speak. And for folks tuning in via phone, if you would like to raise your hands, please use the *9 feature. And if you're joining us by Zoom and you would wish to speak, use the Raise Hand feature on your screens. We will go ahead and proceed with public comment at this time.
All right, so Lourdes Monterrey, you have three minutes, if you'd like to speak now.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Lourdes Monterrey from... I am a worker at Hyatt Place Emeryville, and I am a breast cancer survivor. I went to Zoom meeting because I've been laid off from my job. It's been one year now, and I really need a job because I have children to feed on, and they are depending on me, everybody depending on me, but for now, until now, I don't have a job. Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Lourdes.
All right, moving on to Patty Luna. Please unmute yourself. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Patty Luna Lopez. Before the pandemic started, I have been working at the Hilton Garden Inn in Emeryville for 13 years. And for me, it is very important to have my job back because I have a consistent work schedule that provided me with a reliable income. So, you know, since last March, I haven't been working, so I really need my job back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Luna.
All right, phone number with the last four digits, 9653. You may speak now. If you unmute your phone, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you, City Council of Emeryville for allowing me to speak. I'm an employee at the Oaks Corner in Emeryville, and laid off last March, and I enjoy my job working there. I've worked there 36 years. I need the income. I enjoy working with the people I work for, and I really need to go back with my seniority. I would not like to use my seniority or any of my coworkers' lose their seniority. So it's important that the City Council will consider us, our recall on this issue. And thank you very much for listening, and thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Lorenzia Lewis, go ahead. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, City Council. I love the City of Emeryville. My name is Lorenzia Lewis, stated earlier. I am a kitchen supervisor/chef at the Hyatt Place in Emeryville. I've been employed in Emeryville for more than 10 years, and it's a great place, a great city. My dad used to be a millman in the city before it became modernized again. 94608, I used to meet him over there, and we'd have lunch and stuff. But back to the matter at hand, why does it matter? It matters a lot to me. I know the pandemic has been unprecedented, and 2020, March 2020 changed not only my life but many of the lives throughout America. But I want to focus on Emeryville and my position and my job. I and my fellow coworkers have been very loyal to the Hyatt, Hyatt Place in particular. I love the job. I enjoy all the guests, the great experiences I go through. And I know eventually things are gonna open up, open up, but I want to make sure, I want to, that you guys know, and I appreciate your time, that as the business recover, we want to recover too. We want to know that we can come back and be on our feet. We have families, and I have mortgages, and I have a daughter in college. These things are very important to me, but I can't do it without the commitment of the Hyatt Place. I've been very loyal to the City of Emeryville and to the Hyatt Place and the Hyatt Hotel, and I'd like to send you a return. I want to thank you again for your time and your consideration of this recall, but it's very, very important for all of us to go back to work the way we laugh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Okay, next up, we have Chair Astel Tikong. You have three minutes to speak. Go ahead, please.
I'm Chair Astel Tikong. I'm a resident in Emeryville, and I'm also a worker at the Hilton Garden Inn in Emeryville. I've been there for about 15 years, and I'm a banquet captain. And I'd just like to say that I am a new parent. I recently became a parent right before the pandemic, last year in January. And while I've happily been a mom, I've also been a little bit stressed lately whether or not I was gonna get my job back at the hotel. And, but luckily, I know that there was a state law that passed, and I do believe that I am covered under that job for rehiring rights. But I do know that there are other people in the city that possibly don't get to enjoy that right, and I'd want to encourage and I want to support those workers as well. And I really, really do appreciate you guys having this dialogue and this consideration for the workers of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Next up, we have last four digits, 0441, calling in. Please go ahead and unmute your phone, and you'll have three minutes to speak. That's the person calling in, last four digits of the phone number, 0441. It's your time to speak now. Please unmute and go ahead. Maybe we go back to them?
Yeah, let's come back to them.
Okay, next up, we have Christian, and I understand he is arranged for some translation, so I'm going to allow Ty Hudson also to speak.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and if Christian is not able to finish in three minutes, we can go ahead and extend a little bit for translation purposes.
Okay. All right, go ahead, please. Ty and Christian.
Christian, puedes comenzar a hablar?
Can you make sure he unmutes, Ty?
Yes, I'll try.
And I'll just take this opportunity to remind folks as they line up for public comment, whether now or later after the presentation, go ahead and use the Raise Hand feature on Zoom to be acknowledged. If you are calling in on the phone, you would just press *9 to raise your hand, and then we will call on you at the appropriate time, and it looks like Christian has unmuted himself. So, Ty and Christian, when you're ready to begin, we will start the timer again.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Mi nombre es Cristian Diaz. Trabajo en el restaurante Hilton Garden Inn desde hace siete años. A través de la pandemia pues he perdido mi trabajo y pues deseo regresar porque tengo mi casa que pagar, comida que comprar, un lugar donde vivir y espero que el City Council nos ayude a poder regresar a trabajar. Gracias.
Hi, this, I'll translate. Hi, my name is Ms. Cristian Diaz. I have worked in the restaurant at the Hilton Garden Inn for the last seven years. I was laid off due to the pandemic, and I really need to go back to my job because I have house payments to make and food to buy, and I need to make sure I have a place to live. And I hope that the City Council can help us go back, help us go back to work. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And should we try 0441 one more time?
Yes. Okay, if you're calling in, and the last four digits of your phone number are 0441, you're allowed to speak now. Please go ahead. You'll have three minutes. There you go. Go ahead, please.
Speaker, if you are speaking, it appears you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you at this time.
Hello?
Yes. Now we can.
Now I can, okay. My name is Kidan, and I am a resident of Emeryville and working at Emeryville, at the Oaks, for 27 years as a food server. And I have been laid off during the pandemic for a year and one month right now, and I really want my seniority back. And I want to go back to work and my seniority back and my other coworkers' seniority online too. And I thank you guys for letting us speak our mind at this time, and thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. All right, that was the last hand that I saw raised at this time, and I just will check back in with our City Clerk to see if any electronic submittals have been sent in the meantime.
No, no electronic submittals.
I actually see one last hand raised, and I will recognize this one last person, and then we will move on to the presentation. So I see Estefania.
Oh, you're muted. You're muted, Estefania. There you go.
Hi, so what do you know? My name is Estefania Fracoso, and I've been working on Hyatt House, Emeryville, for nine years. I have laid off one year ago, and I'd like to come back my work because we need to work. We have bills to pay and everything, our rent, so I'd like that you can help us to keep our words when they have our spaces available. Thank you for hearing me. That's it.
Thank you, Estefania. All right, thank you. I want to thank all of the public speakers for coming today. Thank you for joining us for this presentation. At this time, we will go ahead and turn it over to staff to present on the study session.
So, Madam Mayor, we have Chad Smalley and April Shabaz here tonight to present. There is a PowerPoint presentation that they've put together, most of which was included in your packet, responding to the council's referral on this matter. We did add some information that was provided to the council earlier today with regard to the state legislation that one of the speakers mentioned that was signed by the governor on Friday. So there is a little bit of an addition to the presentation tonight, just to provide some basic information about that legislation that we're all still absorbing. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Shabaz, and this is, the PowerPoint is up, April, so if you'd like to take it from here.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council members and Mayor Martinez. This evening, I am here to provide a framework for discussion on the right-to-recall policy you're considering. Next slide. So, right-to-recall requires employers in identified industries to offer all laid-off workers their right to return to their previously-held or substantially similar positions when a business resumes. If there is more than one qualified employee, the position should be offered by order of seniority. There are also specific requirements under this type of policy for notification, recall period, length of service. And then also, successor employees are expected to retain recalled employees for a certain period of time. So even in this case, there is documentation and explanations required. Next slide, please. So when we were given this referral to research, staff understood that the objective of this policy was to mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic on hotel and cardroom workers specifically. These industries appear to have been severely impacted by the restrictions, and there was a significant number of layoffs of employees in these industries. In addition, we learned that some of the targeted businesses are under a collective bargaining agreement, which already provides for a 12-month recall provision, but the challenge here is that the length of time does not cover the actual time and circumstances of the pandemic, as far as the reopening tiers and such. Next slide, please. So staff created a few topics for you to take under consideration when reviewing or pondering this policy. The first is consistency with Measure C and its potential intersections with this existing ordinance. The applicability of the right to recall, meaning who and what, which industries will this policy apply to? The recall length, the timeframe this recall will be covering, notice period, how much time will you be expecting the employer to provide to employees to respond to notices? And then, of course, the sunset date. Next slide, please. So consistency with Measure C, which is our workplace justice standards at large hotels. The main point here is that we are talking about, we want to just point out that we're talking about the same group of employers when we talk about hotels specifically. And with this, we're just asking you to give consideration to a couple of, a few of the sections that already exist under Measure C. One being the definition of hotel. The idea here is just remaining consistent with the definition to help with implementation and enforcement, just to make things a little bit easier, keeping definitions consistent, should there be another ordinance. The waiver, the main point here is that employees are not barred from entering a CBA, waiving provisions of Measure C if the waiver is set forth in clear and ambiguous terms. And then change in ownership. Under Measure C, there's already a requirement for a new employer to retain employees, as well as provide an opportunity for open positions. I believe under Measure C, it's within a 24-month period of time. It lays out requirements for recall, which may not be exactly the same as this policy you're considering. But this is a big area under Measure C we would like for you to consider. Next slide, please. So what we understand is that the right to recall would apply specifically to hotels, cardrooms, and ancillary businesses, including contracted or sublet restaurants operated in conjunction with the hotel, as well as the cardroom, the restaurant in conjunction with the cardroom. Next slide, please. So currently, there are CBAs in place, from what we understand, with a 12-month recall period. And then also, what we found out through our outreach and conversations with some of the employers, that there are some conversations underway to extend that recall period beyond 12 months. Next slide, please. So again, staff conducted outreach to hotels and the cardroom and learned that the following policies are already in place. As we were told, some employers, not all, are covered by a CBA, and there is an existing requirement to offer employment based on seniority. Some of the employers are providing 24 to 72 hours for employees to confirm interest in employment, and they're being contacted by phone and text message. One of the employers provide a seven-days' notice to employee prior to the start date of the position. Most of them are already following a seniority protocol for which they provide documentation, or they're documenting this information. One of the hotels recall based on, their recall is based on performance evaluations. And then overall, most of them indicated that the preferred method of contact is phone and text message due to a higher response rate and just frequent change of address and things like that. Next slide, please. So for the cardroom, we learned that the cardroom has hired back 80% of pre-pandemic employees. So for the card room, we learned that the card room has hired back 80% of pre-pandemic employees, with many of those departments at 100% of those employees wishing to return. In some cases, though, some of the employees have retired, found another job, or declined the position to allow colleagues to, the opportunity to return. And this actually was also the case with some of the hotel employers as well. For the departments with reduced staffing, offers are made by performance. Performance often correlates with seniority here as well, specifically for specialized gaming positions. And then for the associated restaurant that is covered by a CBA, they are not actually expected to open yet due to capacity constraints, but their, their CBA also recalled, have recall position, provisions in them already. Next slide, please. So what we understand is that the ordinance addresses recalls resulting from the COVID layoffs. Also, it's important to point out several of the city's COVID-related regulatory responses terminate 180 days at the, at the end of a declared emergency. And consider that there may be time to allow for businesses to return for full operations when setting a sunset date. Next slide, please. So again, when we were given this referral, we reached out to some of the businesses to also get some understanding on how this policy could potentially impact their current operations. And here, we present you with some of the challenges that they brought forth to us. One being with the increased demand and last-minute bookings, it requires quick onboarding. So that's something to consider when calling back employees within a specified timeframe and providing a specified amount of time for the employee to respond. The required documentation could potentially cause administrative and a financial burden, as well as privacy concerns. They are not very specific about the privacy concerns, but it did come up with more than one employer. No provisions based on their understanding is provided for exceptions for performance or conduct issues. They felt that it could override contractual agreement between the employer and the union that exists already. Several of the employees have also either moved or refused employment due to personal reasons. And then some of them also brought up the fact that other leaves, there could be some conflict with timeframe, set timeframe, should an employee be on a specific type of leave, like disability, CFRA, or family leave. Next slide, please. So staff became aware of this bill after the agenda was published. Therefore, a copy was sent out via email to all of you this morning for review. We have not had the opportunity to fully absorb the information, but what we've listed here are some highlights, based on what we understand SB 93 to include. It was signed by the governor on April 16th this year. It applies generally to hotels, private clubs, event centers, airport operations, airport service providers, janitorial and building and maintenance, as well as security. It applies to employees employed specifically for six months or more in the previous 12 months of January 1st due to COVID, so COVID-specific. An employee must be offered the same or similar position by seniority. There is a five-business-day response time for an employee to get back to the employer once they're notified of an open position. It also applies to new ownership as well as relocation situations, meaning if a business moves within the state of Califor, California to another location, it would also still apply to them. And then enforcement appears to be by the Labor Commissioner, which is triggered by claims submitted to them. And I believe there is a certain amount of funding provided for the Labor Commissioner to enforce this. And the sunset date is December 31st, 2024. And then finally, there's no prohibition on greater standards being imposed by the local government. Next slide, please. So this is the last slide, and these are the policy questions we would like for you to consider. Applicability, which businesses will be covered, which industries specifically? Length of recall benefit, meaning how long after a layoff should employers be required to offer recall to laid off employees? The length of notice period, how long should employee have to respond back to an offer? The intersection with Measure C, again, taken in consideration to be consistent with existing Measure C provisions. And enforcement, would it be private right of action or city enforcement? And then finally, the sunset date, how long should the ordinance be effective or in effect? Thank you for your time, and of course, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, April. At this time, I'll entertain any clarifying questions from my colleagues on council, should they have any, on the presentation or on any of the new information we received today. Does anyone have any clarifying questions for staff? Okay, not seeing hands raised, so we will turn back to public comment. Thank you again, April, for the, for the presentation. And folks, the way you get recognized for public comment, if you're joining us via the Zoom app, please use the raise your hand feature. If you are joining by telephone, please use star nine. And I'm going to ask Member Medina to make this announcement en español, por favor, for folks, just in case they need that.
Lo siento, por mi español. Si quieres tu comentario, levanta tu mano, y después la cabeza dice tu nombre, necesita activar el sonido. Gracias.
Thank you, Member Medina, and I will turn it over to the city clerk to go ahead and unmute folks in order, and you will have three minutes to speak on this item.
The first hand I saw was Ty Hudson, so I think this must be his own comment, perhaps. Ty, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, yes, this is my own comment. Good evening, Mayor Martinez and city council members. I'm Ty Hudson with Unite Here Local 2850. We represent hotel workers and card room workers in Emeryville, and, and more broadly, food service workers and gaming workers throughout the East Bay. I am thankful that you all are considering this, this ordinance. It is very similar to a number of local ordinances that have been passed around the state of California. And it is a really important lifeline for the, the hundreds of workers that have been laid off due to the pandemic just in the, in the city of Emeryville and, and are still laid off. Hospitality workers in general have been among the hardest hit. And this means a lot of people unsure if they will ever be able to really go back to the way their lives were before the pandemic. We all see a light at the end of the tunnel, we all imagine recovering, but a lot of workers still need assurance that they'll be able to recover. I want to speak just briefly to the issue of collective bargaining agreements. First of all, this ordinance is applied, is meant, the proposed ordinance and, and most of the local ordinances that it's modeled on is meant to apply to union and non-union workers alike. That would be the, there are union and non-union workers in these, in the targeted industries in Emeryville, and it's meant to apply to everybody. So some of them are not covered by collective bargaining agreements at all. I can tell you that those who are covered by collective bargaining agreements, most of, three of the four collective bargaining agreements in the city of Emeryville, the recall rights under the CBA have already expired. And while we have requested to extend them, those, the employers have declined. One of them expired but was extended. But again, given the uncertainty of when, how quickly the economy recovered, it may not be extended for long enough. And so we think that, that this is a fair and, and sort of basic protection for workers to be able to get back on their feet. Briefly, I'll speak to SB 93 as well. This SB 93 is a really important statewide standard. As you heard from the presentation, it does not preempt stronger local ordinances. And the, the proposed ordinance in Emeryville would be stronger in a few ways. One, it would provide the option of a private right of action, which is really important for encouraging compliance and allowing workers to enforce their rights. It does apply, SB 93 does not apply to card room workers, so that's an important local factor, or casino workers in general. And, and it is, also provides a broader right of recall that would allow people to be, to have the right to recall to jobs that they are qualified for, even if it wasn't the job that they immediately, they held immediately prior to being terminated, which is a very important difference in case the mix of jobs offered by an employer changes in some way after the pandemic due to business needs or operational changes. So you, the first priority would be for folks who held the job immediately prior. But if a new job was created or more of job A was available and less of job B, the people who previously held job B would, would, would have the opportunity to go back to the open positions in job A. I hope I'm explaining that cogently. So again, I really thank you for, for considering this. I hope that you'll give direction to, to staff and city attorney to move forward with an ordinance that's similar to what we proposed, which would be consistent with this, with the city of Oakland, your neighbor. And, and look forward to working with you to help folks get back on their feet. Thank you.
Next up, we have Elizabeth Portillo. Unmute and go ahead, please. Elizabeth, go ahead, please. Okay, maybe we'll come back to her. Phone number ending in 9653, it's your time to speak. Please unmute and go ahead, you have three minutes.
Si, mi nombre es Elizabeth Portillo, trabajo de washer en el hotel Hilton. Llevo ocho años trabajando ahí, queremos regresar a nuestro trabajo. Si nos pueden ayudar, este, a regresar a nuestros trabajos. Gracias, y que Dios los bendiga.
Ty, are you able to translate for us?
Uh, yes, I was not prepared, but I'll do my best. My name is Elizabeth Portillo. I've worked as a dishwasher at the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel for the last eight years. I've been laid off, and I really want to go back to my job if you all can help me and my coworkers go back to our jobs. We would thank you very much. Thank you, and, and God bless you. I hope I got everything. I think that was most of it.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to leave you on in case we need you again. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay, is the caller with the last four digits 9653 ready to speak now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, and council members, mayor, and other in attendance. I wanted to speak in favor of the implications signed by the governor last weekend, I guess SB 93, and also the adjacent municipalities like Oakland and other cities in favor of the provisions set forth. One of the things that saddens me nevertheless is that not all classifications of service workers has been represented. And this certainly sets the appeal to consider workers in those allied fields like casinos and card room service workers. So I'm making a special appeal that that special classification, card room employees as well as casino employees be included, I think, in good faith. And I'd like to make that appeal, especially for that classification and others who may have been excluded from this position. And on that note, I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, and next up is Mabel Scullion. Mabel, please unmute, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Okay, maybe while we wait for Mabel, we can move to George Perez.
Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Milde Gonzalez. En vez de George Perez, es mi hijo.
Okay, go ahead.
Yo trabajo en Hyatt House Hotel por más de un año, y, y mi intención es regresar a mi trabajo. Mi trabajo era de breakfast attendant. El cual yo quiero regresar es porque dan buenos beneficios y porque también hacía apoyo a mi familia, a mis hijos. Y la verdad sí quisiera regresar a la misma posición que tenía.
Good evening, I worked at the Hyatt House Hotel for more than one year as a breakfast attendant. I would like to go back to my job. I would like to go back because they have good benefits and the job allows me to support my family and friends. And I would like to go back to the same position that I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and going back now to... Uh, let's see, it looks like Mabel fell off. I've got a number here, 762352. If that's you, it's your time to speak. Please unmute, and you have three minutes. Go ahead. You can go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you. You're speaking, we can't hear you. 762352? Not sure what's happening there.
It looks like we got another hand raised.
Yes, last four digits, 2065, calling in. If you'd like to unmute and go ahead, you have three minutes to speak. Oh, okay, you're unmuted now, please go ahead. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead and make your comments.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria Gonzalez. Yo trabajo en Hyatt House, Emeryville, por trece años, catorce ya casi. Yo estuve fuera de, porque mi mamá tiene Alzheimer, y no tenía quien me la cuidara. Regresé antes de pasar, este, antes de, apenas acabo de regresar. Y es necesario que regresen todas mis compañeras, porque tenemos tantos beneficios. Tenemos, este, necesidades que cubrir con nuestra familia, no podemos perder el trabajo. Necesitamos regresar, necesitamos la seguridad con esta pandemia, necesitamos un seguro. Necesitamos un seguro médico que nos respueste. Estamos algunas personas están internas. Tenemos amigos internos o cosas así. Necesitamos que todas las compañeras regresen a trabajar. ¿Qué vamos a hacer sin personal, sin trabajo? Recuerden que no sabemos cuánto acabe esto y ustedes como ciudadanos de Marville para que quieren tanta gente sin trabajo. Eso es todo, nada más. Muchas gracias, mi amores, por escucharme.
Okay, my name is Maria Gonzalez. I've worked at the Hyatt House for thirteen, almost fourteen years. I was out for a long time because I, during the pandemic, because my mother had Alzheimer's and didn't have anybody to take care of her. I recently went back to work, but it is necessary for my coworkers to go back to work because they depend on the benefits, they depend on the health insurance, they depend on themselves to, they depend on the jobs to be able to keep the, to support their families. Some of them are sick, some of them have sick family members. And what are they going to do without work? I know that the city of Emeryville doesn't have, want to have a lot of unemployed people. So I hope that you will help us, help my coworkers go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call on the number seven six two three five two one more time to see if you're available to make your comment now.
Sherry, I see them appear twice and the second one has its hand raised.
Okay, let me try to allow that one and see what happens. Hi caller, seven six two three five two. You may go ahead and make your comments now if you can hear us. Go ahead, please.
Sherry, the one I see with a hand raised is still muted. They need to unmute themselves or?
Right, I've been asking them to unmute. Shall I put them back on hold and for now?
Yeah, we've got, Mabel Scullion is back.
Okay. Okay, Mabel, go ahead.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because I don't know how to play with this Zoom before. Okay, I worked at the Emeryville for over twenty some years and since we lay off, oh, Emeryville, Hilton Garden Inn, I hope we can get the job back soon. And thank you for the Emeryville concern and help us a lot. Thank you.
We did that last call at seven six two three five two.
Yes, one is unmuted and one I've been asking to unmute. Caller, if you can hear us, seven six two three five two is the number that shows up. Please make your comments now.
It looks like they've fallen off. Thank you to all the public commenters. Gracias a todos. We appreciate you coming onto this Zoom meeting and speaking with us today and letting us know what's on your minds. I'm going to bring it back to council and I just wanted to check in with my colleagues to see if they would, if each of them would like to go through all of the questions at once or if you'd like me to do a round for each questions. Did folks have a feeling about this? You could just jump in and let me know. Member bowders?
I would like to kind of just do them one at a time, but if you could put them up on the screen at the same time. I know that maybe is not great for people at home, but I would like to see them as we talk about all of them so I can think about them.
Okay, Sherry, if you don't mind pulling up slide 12. The first question is going to be on applicability. And I understand when we conceived of this and brought it forward, the idea was to cover those industries most impacted by our current economic crisis, which was spurred by the COVID-19 pandemic, which are our hotels, our cardrooms and ancillary businesses. So I will open it up to my colleagues to see if they agree or if they have different ideas on whether those are the businesses that we should be targeting with this ordinance. So can we get that up? We had it for a second and then we lost it.
I know, I'm sorry.
And since I won't be able to see you all, I'm just going to, I will choose the order in which I call on you colleagues. And John, I'll start with you just to give you a heads up, but I'll give Sherry a moment to, to bring that back up.
Are you seeing that?
Yes, we're seeing the, your view, so it's not full screen yet.
Right.
It looks like it's supposed to be showing the slideshow now, but it was blank for some reason.
Yeah, I don't know why it's doing that.
You hit an arrow, I think you're at the end. And so I'm noticing the words end of slideshow at the top of the screen. It might be that you're hitting an error or something. So it's picking, taking the screen to like the black page.
Do you see it now?
Not yet.
I'm seeing it here.
Maybe in the interest of time, just read us the first question. We'll start discussing and then while we're doing that, you can figure out how to pop it up.
Sure. May I have the topics written down if that'd be helpful? So the first question is the applicability, the covered employers.
Yes.
And which businesses are covered? So there we go. Okay.
Absolutely. And as I said, I'm going to start with member bowders. If you'd like to give your opinion on which businesses are to be covered.
Yeah, I think it should be all the businesses covered by Emeryville Measure C. We don't have some of the other things that the state law has, like airports and stuff. But I think just for the sake of creating clarity for the regulated businesses, Measure C seems like it would make sense to me.
All right, and member Medina?
Can you pass and come back to me?
Yes, member Pat?
I'm agreeing with member bowders about the member C businesses. Did we also want to include card clubs in that? Because I don't think that's covered by member C, Measure C, but I could be wrong.
Uh, member Donahue?
I don't believe cardroom workers are covered either by Measure C, and I think we should include them.
It'd be my mistake if I misread the slide earlier, so I would agree with that.
That's what I was frantically Googling. It doesn't look like Measure C contains card rooms in it.
Yeah, I believe that's the case. Measure C is, was targeted towards hospitality and hotel workers specifically. So if we were to say Measure C plus cardrooms and ancillary businesses related to cardrooms, I think that would cover the businesses that I, I'm concerned about. And just because that changed a little bit on that last round, well, let's go through it all again, just to make sure we're all in agreement. So member bowders, Measure C plus cardrooms and ancillary businesses?
Yeah, I think we just, when we say, maybe we should just take the slideshow down. It's just a distraction for everybody at this point.
Okay, because I've got the questions before.
Yeah, I, yeah, I keep trying to just see who's on the screen. It keeps changing. So yeah, I'm supportive of that. You know, I think the thing that when we think about who's most impacted and we think from a budget perspective, right now, the two parts of our budget that are most impacted are cardrooms and hotels. We have one card room, but the bottom line being that those are our employees then who are also impacted. So as we try to do our best to build these businesses back up and help them, you know, reestablish post-COVID, I think we need to be doing that for the workers too. So the way I think about it is those are the impacted people who need to be assisted.
Yes, enjoy. Member Donahue, I see your hand raised.
And that includes the ancillary business to the cardroom, the Oaks Corner.
Yes.
Does everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we have that first question answered and staff, please stop us at any time if anything is unclear. For the length of the recall benefit, how long after the layoff should employees be required to offer recall to laid off employees? And again, I'll begin with member bowders.
Okay, for this one, I feel like it should be at a minimum 12 months. But I feel like we should also discuss whether, because we have this experience with COVID where we had this kind of freak situation where it was longer than 12 months, whether we should say that if there's a local emergency declared, whether the 12 months should be told and that whether the city should give notice to an employer that says, you know, you know, you can't count the period of days where there's been a local emergency. Just because we ended up with the situation where collective bargaining agreements had 12 month provisions and then we just saw them run out. So, you know, that's, that's the only consideration I'd offer.
Very good. Member Medina, do you have thoughts on this one?
I agree with that approach. I think 12 months would work in the vast majority of situations. But at this point, I think most people who we heard calling today have been out of work already for over 12 months. And so that this is a situation we desperately need to account for. So yeah, if we can exempt during this period of this local emergency, that seems sufficient or some other language to address that.
Okay, member Pat?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the 12 months. And I do like the idea of having a pause should we have to go back into a state of emergency.
Member?
Yes, I, I agree.
And I agree as well. In fact, I, I think this isn't a terrible thing to keep on the books with. Well, I guess that takes us to sunset. I'm jumping ahead. But pausing in the event of a, of an emergency, I think, makes a lot of sense. Does staff have any questions about our direction for this question? Or is that clear?
Governor, I think it's going to take some crap, some drafting and we might bring you some language alternatives, but I think we understand the intent.
Yes, our intent, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the third question. This is the length of the notice period. How long should employees have to, how long should employees have to respond to an offer of rehire? I'll bring that to member bowders.
Am I going first in all these, just so I know?
Sorry, I just have, I have, I'm taking notes on what everyone's saying and I just. First.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
You can punt.
Well, I would just say, I have, I'm of two minds, but member Medina, go ahead. Yeah.
10 days.
So here's my only thought with that is if the employer says that's a long time to wait for a reply, especially I'm thinking of, since we've included the Oaks Corner, right? And they need to, and in hotels, I'll just say, I, you know, share habitation space with someone who manages hotels. And, you know, when they're, they're so excited to reopen and hire people back, that they need people who can respond right away. Are we willing to give some flexibility to the 10 days by saying that they can offer it to a pool of people and it's first come, first served within a pool? Because if it's like one at a time, then it becomes like, then you can't hire somebody effectively in 10 days. And that's, that's like the balancing act. Because that's why so many of the regulated folks, I think, at the state level, were pushing for like 24 hours. And I think that there's a happy balance, which is like you can offer it to a pool of people and it's first come, first served within 10 days.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that if it's opening to a pool.
Okay.
And when you say first come, first serve, it's, it's in seniority order.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, so to be clear, like there'd be a class of people in a, in a band of seniority, like five people who are in the same like tenured space, who could be offered, maybe there's only three positions, but they can't wait, find out, you know, wait somebody 10 days to say no kind of thing. I'm trying to just strike the balance with that. I'm supportive of 10 days. I just want to make sure that people who want a job, like can get the job as fast as they want it, right? And not wait for someone else who's taking a long time to reply. That's the kind of thing I'm thinking.
And on the other hand, I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, childcare concerns, taking care of relatives, all of this has shifted. And so making accommodations to return to work does take a few days in this.
Exactly, yeah.
So I think that's a good balance between our two priorities.
Yeah.
Which, why just throw out a number and I know you're going to come back with response.
Uh, member Donahue, member Pats, do you have anything to add?
I, I like how this has gone. And yes, you know, certain, yeah, people have things they're going to have to do to, to say yes. And, but at the same time, businesses need to get started. So maybe the pool idea with seniority, of course, mattering a lot would work.
Great. Member Pats, anything to add?
Yeah, because I have, I have a different thought on this. If I'm not mistaken, the state put five days in their ruling. And for me, I feel like for consistency's sake, I would have gone with two weeks if I was coming up with this from scratch, but I don't have knowledge of the hotel and entertainment industries. That said, I think for consistency across enforcement and employers as they're dealing with the different regulations, it makes the most sense for it to be at five days. And because the state law does cover some of the hotel workers, as I understand it, then they would have two different standards because our longer one is not more restrictive. And I'm not, I'm not going to try to parse that any further because I think I'll just get in trouble. But I'm guessing John has a pithy response.
All right, let me go first before we go bring it back to John. But John, can you turn a light on? I can't see you. I, I think that the, the state law was clear that it doesn't prevent local jurisdictions from passing laws that are more comprehensive. And the reason why 10 days is attractive to me is because when we were crafting our Fair Work Week ordinance, we decided that folks really benefited, their quality of life changed when you gave them 10 days to figure out, well, 10 business days, to figure out what they're going to do with the next two weeks of their life, including planning for childcare, medical appointments, going to school and balancing their other job obligations. So I, I think that, I, I love the idea that member bowders came up with to, you know, go by the longer amount of time, but blast it out to a pool of people and then have people be hired in order of seniority. And member bowders, did you want to make further comments?
I just wanted to, I was going to ask member Pats a couple of questions about his idea, which was, you know, I mean, one is that that state law has a sunset. We haven't discussed sunset, right? So I just wanted to know your thoughts about that. Because the other thing is that the state law doesn't preclude local ordinance taking precedence or having greater obligations. So it would be like if we, if we passed it, I could see between cities, but if we passed it at 10 days, right, the right to, the right to 10 days would take precedence over the five days thing anyway. Like we would, that would be the law in Emeryville. So I just wanted to know if you have thoughts about that.
My idea was two weeks. Let me be very clear on that.
Sorry.
Back around, I just think sometimes, particularly when it comes around enforcement and things, having a lot of different standards can be challenging. And the, and, and this is a mistake on my part, I'll admit it in advance. I also feel like a lot of thought and energy went into that five day standard at the state level. That, and so just for that consistency's sake, I thought it was a way to not reinvent the wheel.
Senator Pats, that is the most generous thing you've ever said about the state government.
I was going to say, I know differently, but I'm not going to tell them that.
Nice, Mayor Donahue.
Well, this is a question for our legal department. Are we on possible thin ice for some kind of future litigation at 10 days versus five days?
I don't think so. I mean, the, as has been pointed out in the discussion, the SB 93 allows for greater protections, local governments to provide greater protections. And so a longer period provided by a local ordinance is supported by the state or by the state regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, member Pats, did you have more comments?
Yeah, I just, I, and, and this is sort of for Mr. Dina. I, because this is a notification requirement, it seems to me that the state requiring people to respond within five days. that the state requiring people to respond within five days is, uh, different than the 10, I mean, I'm trying to think how to frame this. Because there's two sides to this argument. The, the hiring, the employer can say, look, I'm following state guidelines and giving them the five days. And, cause this, that's, and versus us who are extending that to more time. I, and again, I, I don't know. You know, uh, I'm not sure I'm even framing it correctly, but to me it feels like that, uh, they would have to respond for the covered workers within the five, they could use the five days. Am I wrong in this or? How, I, I just don't see how that would get parsed.
If the, um, if, if the, well, because the state law allows for greater protections, if the analysis is that the notice period provided by the local ordinance is a greater protection, then that's what would apply. But did, did that, did I answer your question? Counsel Member, okay.
Member Medina.
Thanks. I would just note that Emeryville in many ways sets itself apart from state law with our minimum wage, our fair work week protections with Measure C. Um, and employers are used to navigating these two things. They have to across California and various jurisdictions. And, um, our city has a reputation, a history of setting good standards for workers in town. This is an opportunity for us to give them the best chance to recover economically possible. And so I just really want to make sure that that's done the right way. And if a little extra time helps somebody go back to a job they've had for, you know, 14 years, as we heard earlier this evening, that's well worth it in my opinion.
Madam Mayor, I've got a clarifying question.
Yes.
Um, are those business days or calendar days?
I was gonna say calendar days. I was being generous.
Member Pat?
So, and, and just a point of clarification, because it's not five days to return to work, but it's five days to accept the job offer. Which means they still, we still have that 10 day scheduling requirement, do we not?
That, these workers aren't necessarily covered by Fair Work Week, which covers, um, retail and, um, fast food.
Yeah, I, so I'm not arguing against. Think our way through it.
I'm sorry?
I, I apologize. We were speaking at the same time. I am not arguing for five days as much as I'm trying to make sure we think our way through it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And, and I apologize for, um, confusing the issue. I brought up Fair Work Week just to, um, remind us of the fact that we've considered that workers in the past, that we've considered that workers, um, uh, can use that time productively when they have more time to consider their schedules and, and what's going on in their lives. That it, it is a benefit to them and their families. Um, but I think that we are, um, we're basically in agreement on this question. So 10 calendar days. Is everyone feeling okay with that? All right. Um, and then I wanted to ask staff, the next bullet point is intersection with Measure C. And I didn't really understand a question for this one. So I will, um, bring that back to, um, April, Chad, Charlie, whoever would like to take this. And, um, if they can come back and just, uh, let us know exactly what you would like from council.
If I may, Mayor, this is Chad Smalley, Economic Development and Housing Manager.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, we don't have any specific question for you on this. Really, um, we just, we just wanted to alert you to the earlier slide where we encouraged consistency with some of those provisions of Measure C where they may intersect with a potential, um, ordinance.
Okay, very good.
No specific feedback is, is looked for here.
All right. And based on anything that we've said, Chad, do you want to highlight anything for us?
Um, not at this point, no.
So if I could just maybe add, just to remind the council of the slide, there's definitional things, like the definition of hotel. The definition of, um, when the new, new employer, you know, that when there, there's a purchase and sale. There are several definitional items that I think we were trying to highlight, um, having consistency between these two ordinances because the covered employer overlaps, uh, particularly with regard to hotels. So if the council was comfortable with the policy direction being consistency with Measure C, I think that's what we're looking for.
Uh, that's understood. Yeah, let's, let's just do thumbs for this one for folks. Okay. And a comment question by Member Batters.
I do. I, I just want to clarify that among these definitional items, the thing I had written down as a note, this was one of my two spots I had questions was, Measure C only applies to changes in ownership. Is that correct?
Correct.
It doesn't recall.
That portion of Measure C, yes.
So if a person, so do, so layoff is can be, layoff is included inherently in what we're doing here or only change in ownership? I'm assuming it makes the point of the ordinance is layoff.
Uh, so some, some of the right to recall ordinances included these change of ownership provisions. And Measure C has provisions already that relate to retention of employees upon change of ownership. So that is the element that we were looking to, that intersection is what we were looking to, to make consistent is one of the things that we were considering.
So my other half of the question is the state bill that passed also added the relocation of the business. And I just don't know for the covered entities that we have, whether that's really a, like even an issue of practice, a practical nature. But I'm just curious whether the staff think there's any reason for us to add relocation of the business. Like if that's, if there's some legal loophole where somebody could technically, like, like I, I just want to make sure that we don't have any like loophole here. That's all I'm looking at.
We could, we can look at that. I, my initial reaction is that I don't see a loophole there, but we'll, we'll work through that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dog just ate a pencil. Okay, so we're good with consistency with Measure C. That brings us over to enforcement mechanisms. So the question is, would we rather have this be a right to private action or city enforcement? And not to pick on Member Batters, I'll go first, that I, I would prefer a right to private action. On this and just look for a thumbs up or thumbs down for my colleagues or a question.
I would agree, but I would just note, Madam Mayor, I think you just missed that April had her hand up on the last item.
I apologize. April. Do you want to?
Okay, it's okay. I was just going to provide you with an example of, um, the point of change in ownership. One thing that you might want to consider and hopefully I articulate this correctly, but when you're talking about timeframes, like you just mentioned the 10 days. Um, under change of ownership in Measure C, um, the requirement is to request that the new employer holds a position or open up a position up to 24 months. So it gets very technical and it probably, we can flush this out when we write it out, but the timeframes, like the amount of time given to employees and the trial period that's given to employees that's reflected in both of these ordinances has to be considered. There's like 90 days you have to offer the employee before they're discharged under Measure C. But it's 45 days given under the state bill. So all of those are very technical things, but things to consider where those two, um, ordinances kind of point those out. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for highlighting that. Um, and then back to right to private action. It looked like we had all the thumbs up on that. Okay, very good. And that brings us to, um, sunset date. Does anyone want to kick it off on when they think this should be over? Member Batters?
I, I don't think there should be a sunset. I think it should just be a standing law in the city. I mean, unless others disagree.
I'm sorry. Christian?
Oh, no, I, I agree.
I, I agree as well. That's, that's exactly what I was thinking because this, this, the, the one thing that the pandemic has taught us is that we didn't know what to expect. So who knows what the next state of emergency, natural disaster, um, economic collapse is going to look like, what will cause it, how long it will last. Um, and that's what this type of ordinance is born of. And, um, it, this, this crisis really showed us, um, you know, what, what our weaknesses are as a city. And, um, you know, as, as Member Batters astutely put, as we, um, as we move to recover, we, we can't forget those workers who are such a part of our recovery and our, um, our life here in Emeryville. So I believe that gets to all of the questions. And I'll look to staff to see if there's anything, um, remaining unanswered to Member Batters. Did you have a question or a comment?
I did. It, I don't want it to sneak through the cracks because I, I caught it on a slide and I made a note about it. We had a presentation that said one hotel recalls based on performance. And so I just want to be really clear that we are recalling based on seniority because I view performance as an employer's right to deal with their employees. But if you've laid a person off and you have not actually fired them or gone through a termination process, so you've just chosen to lay them off. I don't want people to circumvent labor laws by basically saying, well, we just don't want, you know, like it's, it's just, to me, it's ripe for discrimination to say, we don't want to hire back the non-English speaking person or the gay employee, you know, I, to me, it, it just, they can just couch it as performance and we don't get to go into their space and, and I'm not looking to, if they want to deal with things in their HR space, that's fine. But if they didn't terminate someone and a person was laid off through this process, I think they should be restored to their rights by order of seniority. And so I just want to be clear because I don't know which hotel it is, but I don't really care either. I just think we should be clear about that in the, in the guidance. That's my ask.
Very good. I, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up and I'm not sure it was a hotel. I think it might have been our card room.
Well, I'm sorry, if that's the case, I, I just think that's a problem.
But I a hundred percent agree and I, I, it looks like, um, our colleagues do as well. So, um, with that, staff, if we're okay to close this, um, study session, if there are no further questions for council, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The time is eight o'clock and our city clerk can let me know and we can start our next meeting of the evening. And for those watching at home, we've got a couple of short meetings to get through before we get to our main meeting tonight. So please bear with us if you're here for one of the items of a regular city council meeting, that'll happen in a few minutes.
Okay, we are ready to call the Mesa meeting to order.
Okay, very good. The time is 8:01 and I'm calling together the, uh, City of Emeryville Management of Emeryville Services Authority meeting. Calling it to order. And I'll turn to the clerk to please call the roll. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I should read the introductory remarks before you call the roll, correct?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being live streamed online and on ETV channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on council agendas and videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled submit an online speaker card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. And now I will turn to the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Batters?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Here.
And Mayor Martinez?
Here. And I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the final agenda.
The move.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Pats, a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there are any ex parte communications to report. Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone's got a raised hand to make audio comments.
No cards and no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will close public comment. That moves us to our consent calendar. If no one has anything to discuss, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Donahue, a second from Member Batters. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Passes unanimously. That moves us to our action item, item 7.1. This is a resolution of the Board of the Directors of the Management of Emeryville Services approving an agreement of employment between, employment between Mesa and Andrea Visweshwara as interim city attorney slash general counsel uh, for the period of April 24th, 2021 through October 31st, 2021, and authorizing the chair of the Board of Directors to execute said agreement on behalf of Mesa. Is there a brief, uh, staff presentation on this?
Yes, I'd be happy to. This is Mayor, council members. This is Trish Raver, Human Resources Director. And, um, as you all know, Michael Geena will be our current city attorney general counsel, will be leaving employment with the city um, this Friday, April 23rd. Um, we have brought forth this resolution for council, or excuse me, for Mesa board approval for an interim employment agreement with, uh, the current assistant city attorney who would be taking the role of the interim city attorney Andrea Visweshwara, commencing on April 24th, uh, through the end of October, October 31st, uh, with a possible extension through the beginning of December while a recruitment, uh, using an executive recruiter is conducted for the city attorney position. And, uh, the, the term, the salary, um, and some other substantive provisions are within the staff report there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there are any clarifying questions. And seeing none, I'll turn to the city clerk and see if anyone has submitted electric comment, uh, electronic comment, not electric.
No, I have no, uh, electronic comment cards and no raised hands.
And no raised hands. And just to remind members of the public, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to be, um, recognized. Or if you're calling in, press star nine, um, to raise your hand. And I don't see any raised hands. So we will bring it back to my colleagues for discussion. I'll also entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move the item?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Pats.
Councilmember Batters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And with that, I would like to thank, um, our, our former, uh, uh, Assistant City Attorney Andrea Visweshwara for agreeing to serve as our acting, um, city attorney. It is much appreciated and we know she's gonna do a great job. She already is. So, um, that brings us to item 7.2 and this is simply a cleanup item, um, for, uh, Mr. Geena's contract. And do we have a, a brief presentation on this?
Um, yes, Madam Mayor, I'll do the brief presentation. Um, as you mentioned, this is a, uh, cleanup of the, uh, two contracts for the period of the 2018 to 2020 and 2020 to 2022. Uh, there was, uh, the base, the base salary amounts that are specified uh, in those contracts, uh, did not take into account, um, cost of living and performance increases that were provided in previous contract terms. Um, and so, um, we are proposing, uh, an amendment to those contracts to provide consistency between the payroll records to show what was actually paid out, uh, and, uh, the contract documents. Um, so. Um so um uh that's the purpose of of these amend proposed amendments.
Very good. I'll check to see if there are any clarifying questions from my colleagues. And it looks like everything was abundantly clear, so I'll check in with the city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment. I do see one hand raised um among our attendees.
Yes, no comment cards, but um I'll go ahead and allow this person. This is the same um person who was trying to speak before.
Yeah.
Number seven, six, two, three, five, two. If you'd like to make a public comment, please unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to speak, starting now. And I've asked them to unmute.
Yes, and I I will um let uh viewers and listeners know that there will be opportunities to comment. Um we're not at our main meeting yet, so um if if you wanted to speak on something general, you will still have your chance um tonight. We still have more items and uh meetings to get through. So um thank you for raising your hand. We'll 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 get to you um at a uh a later part of the meeting, if that's all right.
We have another hand raised now.
Oh, okay. So um and Syria Deleon, so go ahead and unmute the speaker. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, um my name is Emsera. I know that earlier everyone was um pretty much um expressing their feelings about going back to work and I just wanted to express mine. Um I am currently a Hilton Garden employee. I have been working for the company for fourteen years. And um I know and pretty much, you know, I feel everyone of my fellow hotel workers um with the pandemic and the emergency and um not working. Um it has been very hard. Um I have prayed for all of this to end and hope that everyone can adapt and pretty much get their jobs back. It is much needed. I pray that you all understand and in your hearts that you can help everyone to uh get their second home, which is their jobs back. Um thank you for your time and pray for your help. Blessings. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Speaker. Um so to bring it back to item seven point two, I'll look back to my colleagues for any discussion and um if there's none, I'll be happy to entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move the item.
I can the item.
We have a motion from Member Medina, a second from Member Bowders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. I believe that's all we have for this meeting. Yes, it is eight eleven and that meeting is adjourned. We're almost at the main show, folks. Um Sheri, let me know when you're ready to go for successor agency.
Okay, all set. Thank you.
All right. The time is eight twelve and I'm calling to order the um City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency Regular Meeting. And do we need to call the roll or make my announcement?
Uh no, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We're all still here, in other words. Um so that will take us to approval of the final agenda. I'll be happy to entertain a motion in a second.
I move approval of the final agenda.
I'll second.
Great. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Donahue and a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Look to see if there are any experte communications on this. Seeing none, that brings us to public comment. Now's the time for public comment. Uh anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hands and I see um seven, six, two, three, five, two is um has their hand raised. So we can try them again. Member Bowders, do you have something to say?
I just want to note that this six-digit number, we had this at ACTC and this means it's somebody using an iPad and they don't know the number. So we keep calling a number, but it it might be beneficial to say if you're on an iPad, this is your turn to speak because they don't know it's a number.
Very good. That is good to know and I I learned something new. So uh if if you are tuning in via your iPad, our clerk will unmute you and you'll have to unmute yourself to go ahead and have three minutes to speak. Sheri, are are they unmuted on your end?
Um I have hit unmute um several times, but it's not changing the icon.
Madam Mayor.
They have to do it on their end.
What I I will I will spare the commissioner the embarrassment. We have a commissioner at ACTC who always has this problem. And they actually, the menu for Zoom on an iPad is in a different location. And so if you've clicked, if you're on it and you don't know what you're doing, you you've clicked the Raise Hand feature. You actually have to go to a dropdown menu where the clerks have has sent a box that says request to unmute and you have to hit yes to unmute yourself because you're participating as an attendee. We have this problem all the time with one commissioner as well, so the other thing I would just recommend is the person can call in.
Okay, they just went to unmuted. So go ahead and speak if you're calling in on your iPad. Go ahead, please.
Public commenter? I feel like I hear something.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Right. So they may they may not know how to um how to lower their hand, actually. Ally, would you mind just inviting?
I don't think they're listening.
Very good. All right. That's okay, Sheri. We can end the public comment. But thank you for tuning in, whether it's on your iPad or or otherwise. We appreciate people.
Their bird sounds are so attractive.
Yeah, but we appreciate people tuning into our meetings. Um so that brings us to the consent calendars. Anyone have anything to discuss? No, if not, I will entertain a motion and a second.
Move the consent calendar.
Second. A motion from Member Bowders and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And we have no action items and that brings us to adjournment of this meeting at eight seventeen PM. And Sheri, let me know when you're ready to roll on our regular city council meeting.
Okay, ready to go.
Okay, before I begin, would you like me to read the introductory remarks on this one?
Um I'd like to say no, but you probably should since this is the main meeting.
Okay. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. The time is eight eighteen PM. Thank you for joining us today, Tuesday, April twentieth. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV channel twenty seven and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as e-notification and on social media. And so I'll look to the clerk to now please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Pats.
Present.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
And I am here and um does anyone need anything taken out of order on the agenda? Otherwise, I will uh entertain a motion and a second.
I move the agenda.
I'll second.
The motion from Vice Mayor Donahue and a second from Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Um I have no special orders of the day. Are there any announcement of commission and committee vacancies?
Uh just as has been announced before, we are in the middle of a recruitment for our annual terms um ending on on committees and commissions. The applications will be due on May seventeenth by the end of the business day at five. And the appointments are scheduled for a special city council meeting to be held on June fifteenth. There are a wide variety of positions opening up across all of our community advisory committees. So please go online to our website, emeryville.org/AdvisoryBodies and apply. Thank you.
Great. Next up, we have council members' special announcements and reports on meetings and attendance. And I'm going to take some privilege here um because this is our last meeting with our city attorney, Michael Geena. And as many of you know, our city attorney, Michael Geena, is departing the City of Emeryville on April twenty third and joining the City of Burlingame as their city attorney. And we're we're very sad to see him go and we're grateful for his many years of service here in the City of Emeryville and his many contributions. Michael has served the City of Emeryville for fifteen years, both as the Assistant City Attorney and as the city attorney. He played a pivotal role in all of the city's major development projects during that time as well as supporting every city department when they needed his guidance. And he has been a city attorney whose door is always open to everyone on staff. And Michael's approach to providing legal support to the city is defined by his kindness. His advice is focused on making sure the city follows its legal obligations. But he also does the right thing for the community. And for all of that and more, he will be missed. And I hope he is not a stranger to us in this small city and even though we're in the opposite direction of Burlingame. So um I'd love to invite um any of my colleagues who wish to uh make any remarks or uh go ahead and report on meetings attended. Member Medina.
Sure. Um we'll certainly miss our city attorney. Um I'll share that he earned the nickname Fun Police during his tenure here for an incident in which he prevented then-Mayor Bowders from giving the entire mayor's conference cannabis tea. That is my favorite Michael Geena story.
You took my story.
You didn't raise your hand. I didn't know if you were going to say it. It's my favorite thing of all time. Um and you know, he steers us in the right direction, even when we're having just a little bit too much fun. So thank you, Mr. Geena. Also, we haven't gotten to see your fun socks for over a year and that's a real tragedy for us all.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Michael, I just want to thank you for being an even thoughtful person. I felt like you had no other interests other than serving us as council members and serving our community. And uh that was important and I and I thank you for that.
Anyone else? Uh Member Pats.
You know, I I I want to thank you for your service. I've appreciated my time in working with you. And I really appreciate the fact that you stopped uh Councilmember Bowders from passing out the goopher at a very important and prestigious meeting. I thought that was the right move and the right call at the time. It reflected well on the city that we uh handle ourselves with decorum, so thank you for that.
Okay, I have to go.
Member Bowders, I'll continue to defend yourself.
Yeah, no, it's not even defending me. It's like it's just whatever. Um I have to agree with Vice Mayor Donahue first. Michael, uh serving on several regional boards, um I have dealt in many closed sessions with attorneys who aren't even keel um and the board never knows what to do about some of the advice we get. And I really appreciate um your very steady and professional approach to everything. I think that that's um one of your best attributes. I um I appreciate the welcome I received when I joined the city council from you in your office and the way you have conducted yourself. Um and then I one exception, which was at the hosting the mayor's conference in twenty eighteen, as has been noted. Um we had just legalized cannabis and put all our regulations into effect. And it was the swag bag. And I will just note that you were very tardy in raising an objection. Like it was like noon on the day everybody was coming to the event. I had put these things in the bag several weeks in advance, cannabis goodies for all the mayors. And you advised me that it might not be in my best interest. So you were um affectionately introduced as the Fun Police at our formal event that evening. And um I think that has stuck and I will be sending the mayor of Burlingame a warning letter just to let them know that you will police the fun over overly. So um thank you for your service and best of luck to you.
Thank uh thank you, Councilmember. And uh Mayor, if I may. Um yeah, uh I I'd like to, well, first of all, thank you all for uh your kind words. I I really appreciate uh everything um uh that you've said. And um I I really want to uh express my appreciation uh to the council for allowing me to be your city attorney uh for uh this time here. Um I have learned a lot uh during my time and uh this is a great place to work. Um the city is really dynamic um and it is always changing, as seen by, you know, what you were discussing earlier tonight. Um and also seeing, you know, you the the city also changes through all the projects that we do. And uh you know, it is small but mighty, right? This city uh outpaces itself um in terms of it's 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 disproportionate of its geographic size to the projects that we do, uh the policies that it uh explores. And uh just, you know, the the amount of um, you know, the amount of work that that is here. And it is um always really challenging in a great way. And that's part of what has kept me here for so long is just how dynamic um and diverse this city is. And it has been a a really great place to work. Uh and I also appreciate uh the the folks that um I I work for as well because this is a really strong staff. Um and the people um often make the organization and that is very true here at Emeryville. Um and so I also want to express my appreciation appreciation to my colleagues on staff who have been nothing but supportive um and always open to the advice that um my office has has to give, even if it's not something that they necessarily want to hear. Um and I've always tried to support them as much as I can. So I I also want to give uh a shout out to to the staff here as well. But especially I I would really like to thank the council for the opportunity to serve this community as your city attorney. Um and I really thank you for uh for that honor and that privilege. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geena. All right, so we'll move on. Is there a city manager's report this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to echo uh the council's comments, on behalf of the whole staff of the City of Emeryville, we are very sad to be losing Michael. Um he he's just going to be tremendously missed. And as I said in in my letter to the staff um last week, he is, in my personal experience, the most approachable and affable city attorney I have ever had the pleasure of working with. So I I will personally miss him as my next door neighbor. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um does anyone have any experte communications to report? I'll kick it off by saying we've all received many, many, many emails in support of our our. our anti-hate resolution, which is item twelve point one. Um anyone else have anything that they'd like to report? No? All right, so that'll bring us to public comment again. So now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
Uh Madam Mayor, if I may, I will guiltily admit that we received a comment, uh an online speaker card a few days in advance of the last meeting. And when the time came, I neglected to read it into the record. So you have all since received it via email from the commenter, but I'm happy to read it aloud if council would like me to at this time. It's the comment from Brandon Sublet. I'm gonna make it French because I'm not sure if it's Sublet or Sublet. Um regarding unsafe traffic conditions, fifty-third street turnaround. Shall I read it?
Um go ahead.
Okay. I am commenting on a dangerous traffic situation related to the turnaround outside Anna Yates Emory High School on Fifty-third Street. Instead of calming traffic on Fifty-third Street and encouraging turnarounds away from the school drop-off area as intended, the small pavement circle has created an unsafe environment for drivers and residents. Multiple times per week, eyewitness drivers headed east on Fifty-third Street toward the school and San Pablo Avenue intentionally drive on the wrong side of the road to avoid going around the turnaround. This obviously illegal practice is unsafe for people who are getting in and out of cars on the westbound side of Fifty-third Street as well as to oncoming traffic and parked cars. Additionally, on Monday, March twenty-ninth at approximately seven AM, I witnessed an eastbound driver completely ignore the turnaround, driving directly over it at high speed and destroying the small sign in the middle of the pavement and most assuredly parts of their car. I would like to request something be done about the unsafe conditions that have arisen as a result of this well-intentioned turnaround. I recommend that the turnaround be enclosed by a curb and landscaped like the traffic circles at the intersections of Forty-third, Forty-Fifth Streets and Essex-Salem Street, in addition to a speed bump or other traffic slowing measure on the westbound side of Fifty-third Street. Such a setup would deter drivers from driving over the turnaround and make driving on the wrong side of the road less appealing. Conversely, bollards could be installed east of the turnaround. If drivers know they cannot quickly get back on the correct side of the road, they might think twice about potentially driving into oncoming traffic. I see that the issue has been reported in C Click Fix numerous times during the last five years. I hope this more direct appeal will prompt some action before someone is injured or worse.
Thank you, Sherry.
And um I do have two raised hands in attendees. One is again the uh the one we've dealt with before, and then we have Elizabeth Portillo. So
Good, I'll let you handle this.
I'll go ahead and allow Elizabeth at this time. Elizabeth, if you'd like to speak, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
So do we have anyone who might be able to translate for Elizabeth?
Hi is no longer on.
Member Medina, you want to take a stab at it?
Sorry, I didn't get fantastic audio. I really just caught Sisupuete, which I think you all are familiar with.
Yes. Great, all right. Thank you, Speaker. And should we try to get seven six, the iPad?
All right, one more time.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Necesita activar el sonido. Puedes hablar?
They are unmuted.
Okay, all right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, public commenters, for joining our meeting. Uh that will bring us to our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything to discuss? If not, I'm happy to entertain a motion and a second.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
We have a motion for Member Medina, a second for Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, that passes unanimously, which brings us to public hearings. The first is item eleven point one, a resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville establishing updated development impact fees for fiscal year twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And we've got Charlie Bryant. Would you be presenting for us?
Yes, I will.
I'd like to make a request to waive presentation.
Or maybe not.
Well, thanks for joining us for questions, Charlie. I just wanted to check in with my colleagues if they are okay with waiving this presentation.
Yep.
Okay, Charlie, stand by, and thank you for tuning in tonight.
I'm right here.
Very good. Um so I'm gonna assume that nobody has any clarifying questions since we're waiving presentation. So we'll check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted public comment or whether anyone is raising their hand to speak on this item. Uh Michael Gina?
Madam Mayor, so are you opening the public hearing?
Oh, you know what? Yes, I will open the public hearing. The time is eight thirty-five, and I'm opening the public hearing. Thank you for reminding me of the proper journey.
And I have no online comment cards. However, we have that same raised hand again.
Well, let's try again to get this person to speak because this is a public hearing. And Ally, if you don't mind inviting them to unmute themselves in Espanol?
They got it.
They're unmuted, so just please go ahead and make your comments. Yes, go ahead and speak.
I think we might have a situation where a child has the
I think there's a child pushing the buttons. I was gonna say the same thing. I don't think we have an adult on the
You are still invited to speak. This is a public hearing. But if you wish not to, then we're gonna go ahead and move on. Um if there are no other raised hands, I'll give the clerk one more opportunity to check her email box and see if anyone has submitted electronic comment. Otherwise, um I'll be ready to close the public hearing.
There are no cards at this time.
It is eight thirty-seven. I am closing the public hearing. Bringing it back to council for discussion or for a motion on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
I second.
We have a motion from Member Bowers, a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to our next public hearing, which is eleven point two. This is a resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville amending the City of Emeryville master fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And do folks want to hear this presentation?
No? I think we can waive that presentation if you'd like.
The request is to waive the presentation. And it is eight thirty-eight PM. I'm gonna open this public hearing and check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment or if any hands are raised.
There are no comment cards and no hands raised.
Okay, and I just want to remind members of the public that you would use the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. Or if you're calling in from a telephone, you're gonna press star nine to be recognized. I'll just give it ten seconds to see if anyone would like to speak. And seeing no raised hands and no public comments, I am going to close this hearing. Oh, wait, we've got, we've got a raised hand. Um would you please unmute Elizabeth Portillo?
Elizabeth, if you'd like to speak, go ahead now, please.
Spanish?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, ese es lo que único que podía decir que sí se puede para los trabajadores, estamos unidos. Si los pueden ayudar porque así como lo hizo César Chávez, también nosotros podemos. El pueblo sí se puede.
Gracias, gracias. Member Medina, do you want to give a stab at?
Oh, God, um listen, Sisupuete, workers are together, something in the words of Cesar Chavez. Um el pueblo is united. People are united.
The community, it's the community.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your comments. And I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now at eight forty. Thank you. Uh so is there any discussion with my colleagues or would anyone like to move the resolution?
Move the resolution.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion for Member Pats, a second from Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Passing unanimously, which moves us on to our action items. There's uh first up is item twelve point one. This is a resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville denouncing xenophobia and anti-Asian racism arising due to fears of the COVID- nineteen pandemic and affirming the City of Emeryville's commitment to the well-being and safety of Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. Um I brought this item forward. I think the title is self-explanatory and the sentiment is self-explanatory. But I'm happy to answer any questions from my colleagues. Um seeing none, I'll check in to see with our city clerk to see if we've received any public comments um through the comment card link.
None at this time, no.
And I don't see any hands raised. However, um all of me, my colleagues and I have received several emails in support of this resolution. So I will bring it back and I will take the privilege of going ahead and making a motion um to pass the resolution. Just looking for a second.
Second.
Oh, Councilmember Bowers?
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Bowers?
I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for putting this on the agenda and for being a leader on behalf of our community and making it clear what our community's values are, which we've restated unfortunately under numerous circumstances in the times in the past. But it doesn't um in any less diminish the necessity to do that today, and I appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you. Um as an Asian-Pacific Islander, um I am I, I think I was a little bit in denial that we would even need to pass this resolution. But the reflections of hatred and violence against Asian-Americans has been persistent and rising. And that is something that surprised me in a very unhappy way. Um but we, I appreciate the support from this council to move this forward. And I did hear a very quiet second from Member Pats, and I will take that second. And thank you for it. And we'll go ahead and um call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And I want to thank staff too, because I know they support this sentiment as well. So thank you very much. Um the next item we have is twelve point two. This is the mid-year review of fiscal year twenty twenty-one and proposed budget amendments, resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville amending the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And um I know the hour is late, but I hope um that my colleagues will support at least a brief presentation um from Brad, because I just think this is a very important issue. And I think it would be good for our community members to get this presentation. So Brad, if you would take it away?
Thank you. Um if we could go to the next slide, please? So basically, what I put together for us tonight is basically the general fund overview and then the other funds within the city that do require some sort of mid-year adjustment, which there are very few and they're minor, but we'll go through them. If we can go to the next slide, please? So I just wanted to point out here, um one of the things that happened in October was council authorized an additional use of five million dollars to kind of fill the hole of the gap that comes throughout the year facing this COVID. One of the things that's really nice that I can put on or present to you tonight is it looks like we're gonna actually only utilize about two million dollars of that five million that was authorized previously. This is really a reflection upon all of the departments. We have a little bit better revenue in a couple areas, but the departments and department heads really pulled together and kind of cinched the belt and have pulled expenses down, as you can see, by two point one million dollars. Um the five million dollars initially was based upon a revenue decrease, which we are seeing about a four point two million dollar decrease. But that then nets down to two million dollars use of that authorized fund balance. And so this is really a good presentation. I hope you take it that way because I'm really pleased to be able to present this to you. Um next slide, please. So what I thought to do is just kind of go through some of the revenues. Um I'll try to do it pretty quickly, but um there's a couple things I definitely want to point out. For um our purposes, what we did is we put together a mid-year adjustment. And so we go ahead and project what we think's gonna happen through the end of the year. And then um so I'm gonna go through those now. So the business license actually came in a little bit better than we had expected, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We did only lose about a hundred and thirty-five businesses. Unfortunately, they are the smaller businesses. But overall, I was very pleased to see that. And I'm sorry, I just realized I'm talking about cannabis before. Can you talk about cannabis first? We actually are seeing a little bit better um revenue based upon the cannabis sales and the taxes in the current year, which is kind of common to a down economy. Um sometimes sin taxes tend to increase a little bit. Um but we're having a good production there. On the business license, I'm sorry, I misspoke before, but it's coming in about three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars better than what we had projected. And that's kind of offset with the card room. Because when we put this presentation together, the card room had not opened. So we were anticipating zero dollars for the whole fiscal year. Um I noticed that they did open about a week ago. So there will be some recovery here. So maybe the whole one point four million dollars in projected revenues won't be lost. But at this point, given that they're opening on a modified schedule and it's due to capacity issues, we're not sure what that is. So we've gone ahead and eliminated that full amount at this point. We have some departmental revenues that went down about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And that's basically all service-oriented. Um a lot of that has to do with the community services, recreation department. The franchise fees are coming in a little bit higher, which is kind of expected because more people are at home. So you're getting more utilization of some of the franchise fees that are gonna come through garbage. Some of the other franchises that come through. If we can go to the next page, please? Fuel cells are expected to be pretty much exactly where we thought they would be at the marina, so nothing really there. The grants and subsidies are up a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, and that is one of the CARES Act funding that we received this year for last year. So that's expected to be there. Interest, in the past, we have not really done a great job, to be honest, at budgeting interest. Um so I've gone ahead and put in a variable there because I do believe that we're gonna be coming closer to that hundred and fifty mark for the general fund. And going forward, we will definitely be making budgets for the twenty-one, twenty-two for the general fund, and going forward, we will definitely be making um budgets for the twenty-one, twenty-two and beyond, um, assuming an interest rate based upon our expected cash reserves. Um, market value adjustment, this is one of the things that I wanted to point out, because we did not, and we typically do not budget this, um, but at the six-month mark, we were down three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on our investments. So I want to make sure that I'm really clear about that, that that's not a real money. This is actually a, it's a gap presentation. We are required to report if investments either increase in value or decrease in value over time. The city's um portfolio is such that we are able to hold our investments up until the maturity when they're expected to mature. So the investment uh market value loss is more of a paper loss. It's not a um, it's not a real money loss. And at this point, um, the funds that we have, we do not expect to sell those um that are there. Um, if we can go to the next slide. Thank you. And then motor vehicle and lieu, um, which is a function of property taxes, is coming up just a little bit higher. Um, next, please. Other revenue is um pretty much flat, as is the pass-through um taxes, um, down a little bit, eleven thousand. Not a big deal there. The property transfer tax is up a little bit, and that was based upon the uh direction that council gave last June to redistribute that. Um, so we're doing a little bit better than we thought there. Um, the property tax that comes through the ROPS, or which is a residual amount, um, is pretty much about where we thought it would be, but it's just slightly up, and property taxes are expected to hold steady. Uh, next page, please. Um, rentals are um, were already budgeted to be down this year based upon COVID, and they're coming in about right where we expected them to be. Um, residential parking permits um are down a little bit um this year over last year, and that has been a trend that we've seen over time. Um, so it's, while it's a large percentage, it's not a large dollar amount, so just a thousand dollars. Um, sales tax is actually recovering a little bit better than what we had anticipated. Um, and that's based upon, um, a lot of that is coming in from some of the county pool, um, which has been increasing a little bit for us. Um, our sales tax, public safety is pretty much a set thing, so that's at the beginning of the year is there. But the real thing that's kind of got a stranglehold on the city's finances for the general fund is the T O T or transient occupancy tax. That's the hotel tax that um our visitors pay when they stay in the rooms um here locally. And as we've heard earlier this evening, um, with the economy opening up, if this is one of the things that we're just not sure about how fast the economy is going to open up. As the economy opens up and people either get the vaccine or don't get the vaccine, and business travel starts to increase, um, we expect to see that increase. But unfortunately for this year, we are not expecting to see that increase. And in a couple of weeks, when I talk to you about next year's budget, um, it will slightly increase over what we have this year, but it's not going to be anywhere near um what we had seen or what we had originally budgeted in the current year. Um, next slide, please. Um, transfers in. So at the February eleventh um budget and governance meeting, we brought to them an item asking for clarification on measure F. Measure F, as you recall, is the sales tax measure that was passed. And we are recommending that that be utilized to help pay for the child development uh programs. As, and that's one of the few items that was actually authorized um in the ballot, and the Budget and Governance Committee suggested that we utilize those funds that are collected in this year to be used to offset the subsidy that the general fund pays for. And that is a tune of one point five million dollars that is coming in, um, and we're expecting that to come in in full this year. And so I just wanted to point that out, because that is a big number. Um, and the initial six point six million dollars, that is made up primarily of the one-time six point three eight million dollars that was approved last June to cover the shortfall that we had anticipated in the current year. And then the utility users tax is coming in a little bit more, and once again, that's going to be um, I think, associated with more people staying at home. And so maybe their um entertainment is more home-based versus outside, and so we're getting more of that type of revenue. So I will stop right there for the revenues, um, just to see if there's any quick questions that anybody might have.
Member Medina.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Farmer, does the cannabis tax revenue increase um account for the s- um, the opening of a second storefront as well, the, the year to end estimate?
It does not account for the um newest one that opened on San Pablo a week ago.
Right.
We just don't have any history on that particular uh location at this point. Um, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a little bit better idea, but um at this point, it's brand new. They always pay um thirty days after the quarter, so since they actually opened in the fourth quarter of our operating year, we won't see that revenue until July of next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, um, Brad, do you uh want to go on? Are there more slides?
Yeah, please. We can go back to the presentation, thank you. And the next slide, please. So as I presented to you or discussed a little bit earlier, there was a two point one million dollar savings, and I wanted to point out really where that is, and this is very much departmental savings that I want to give credit across the board. Um, we do have vacancy positions. Um, these are authorized and budgeted positions that departments have been able to hold open um, or delayed in hiring throughout the year, which totaled about six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, the big savings is really the operational, um, departments have really pulled together and reduced current year's expenditures, uh, one point eight million dollars. And that's mainly due to some of the reduced services that are being provided, um, as everything has been shut down. And those would be expected to return as the economy opens back up. And then the transfer out of three hundred and seventeen thousand is additional funding that is being requested for the um childcare program, which was being funded by the one point five million dollars that I mentioned earlier. But overall, it's a very good um remark that we are able to go ahead and, in a time of crisis, pull together and kind of take a haircut of about two point one million dollars without having to sacrifice any personnel at this point. Um, and that will end my discussion on the um general fund. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so I did want to just kind of re-summarize what I said before. Um, that this is, um, you know, we do have a, a shortfall in the revenues, but we also have a really, you know, almost fifty percent of that, or a little bit over fifty percent of that was offset by savings in the expenses. Um, and so I think we're really proud. I think all the staff has done a great job. And um with the direction of City Manager, we have been able to do a good job for this year's budget on the general fund. Um, if we can go to the next slide. So the next few slides are a few cleanup slides. Um, and as you recall, last year, we were kind of in a transition period at the end. We did go um from the prior finance director to an empty director. Um, and there was a couple of things that either got overlooked or should have just been picked up. Um, we'll make the changes for those, but one of the things, for instance, is sewer fund depreciation, which is a non-cash item. This is um kind of a bookkeeping type of thing, was not budgeted, so we have to adjust that by seventy thousand dollars. It doesn't affect the operating capital or any cash accounts, um, but this is just a cleanup item, so we can put our best foot forward moving forward. And this has already been scheduled for next year. Uh, next slide, please. So one of the other things that happens is this is the last payment of bond that we issued. And unfortunately, when it was budgeted, it was budgeted out of the redemption fund versus the reserve fund. All final payments come out of the reserve fund. So when you initially have a bond, you have to put money aside as a reserve, and that's really held to make sure that you have the payments. And it's also held for the very last payment, so we're just putting this into the correct fund. Um, because we don't have five hundred and fifty-one thousand in Fund seven twenty-one, but we do have the funds in seven twenty-seven. So this is, once again, just a little bit of cleanup. And next slide, please. And so I am here to answer any questions. Um, I would recommend that you approve the resolution as submitted, authorizing the adjustments to both adjusted revenues and expenses. I know there's quite a long list. Um, it's quite detailed, because we went through um over six thousand lines when you actually get down to the line items of the budget to make all of the adjustments. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have. Oh, one more thing. Um, this was approved or recommended for seminal and approval by the Budget and Governance Committee.
Thank you, Brad. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there are any clarifying questions on the presentation. Seeing none, I will check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment or if any hands are raised.
No electric com- electronic comment cards, however, I think you're all seeing this. Um, are we just going to let it go?
I, you know what, I, if, if someone is tuned in and trying to speak to us, I do, do want to unmute them and see if they'll speak, but if they, if they won't, that's another matter. So go ahead and do your thing, try to unmute folks. And kids, if, if you're um, if you're a child and you're watching from an iPad and you want to speak to us, this is your time. And if you don't want to speak to us, I just want to say that I'm just tickled that we can hold your attention this long into the evening, and hopefully we're inspiring you into public service, because this is where the sausage is made. And we're, we're, we're hopefully making people's lives better with the work that we're doing right now. But um, personally, iPad, if you would like to speak, this is your, your chance.
They are not opting to unmute on their end.
Okay, very good. So we will um close the public, public comment um portion of that, of this item, and um bring it back for any discussion. Um, as, as Brad aptly said, this has been through the Budget and Governance Committee. Um, and I, 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 I just want to reiterate something that he um also expressed, which is that um it really was all hands on deck for staff to pull together um savings in this budget, and it was every department um and every director who uh really took responsibility for um uh really closing some very important gaps for the city, um, while at the same time still providing the excellent service that we all expect here in Emeryville. So those are my two cents. If anyone else um has any comments, now is the time. Member Bouters?
Yeah, it's the other member of the Budget Governance Committee. I just want to thank staff, um, both our finance team and Mayor Martinez and the City Manager for eh an inordinate amount of work that goes into putting together something very comprehensive. Um, most of the public, when we poll them for things we do in the city, they, over a third of them say they don't know anything about the budget or how it's done, and it's a murky, dark space to a lot of people. And it's an extremely detailed document that requires a ton of time, patience, and attention. And I just want to thank the professionals on our staff for doing that, and I also want to thank all the department heads and city staff who through this troubling year um leaned in to help us close this gap in this current fiscal year as much as possible, um, which just sets us up to hopefully recover, um, you know, through, through the eye of a needle and over a rainbow with a unicorn in tow is what I'm hoping in the next year, so we'll see, but just thank you to everybody.
Member Medina.
I think Scott's hand was up first. Sorry.
Yep, Vice Mayor.
Well, I just uh am amazed at uh how well our retail sector has been doing. I mean, I know some of it is because I guess we're getting some from outside of Emeryville, but still, the surrounding communities haven't been doing that well, from my understanding. So I think our location has worked for us, and uh I just hope that somehow our hotel industries here in town will, it'll be the same story as things open up, but we, it's a total mystery going forward about that. And uh, you know, it's expected that retail in general is going to go down, so it's not like we can just breathe a sigh of relief. No, we have to actively monitor going forward, but the, the news is just not as bad as what I had thought when the pandemic started. It just seems like we, we have a shot at really recovering in eh, eh sometime in, in the next few years in, in some way.
Is that, uh, Member Medina?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I really appreciate the work of our Budget and Governance Committee, as well as all the city staff that frankly pulled together um a budget that preserves um both our services and our staff capacity. I think it's uh no small feat. Um, I've, I do have a lot of hope that we're going to see some recovery in the T O T um tax section. I was on a call last week with the California Cannabis Tourism Association, and they were reporting um early big numbers of tourism interest to states with legalization. So um if we're lucky, especially now that we have two locations in town, we may see a T O T boost associated with our strong cannabis industry. Um, here's to hoping.
Madam City Manager.
Um, I'm going to jump in and be a little bit of a wet blanket for context. Um, as we uh will be looking towards our presentation for next fiscal year at your May fourth meeting, the uh prior year, um, prior to the pandemic, the sales tax was coming in at about eight point six million. And so what we reported to you tonight is that our sales tax is doing better than we had projected in June, but when we did that, we had reduced our revenues by over two million dollars. So just for context, we've lost over two, close to two and a half million dollars of revenue in that alone. Business license tax, again, we reported to you good news, which is that we are doing better than we had projected in June, but that June projection was over a million and a half below what our previous year had been. So I just want to remind us of context. When we're thinking about moving forward, we are presenting you a reduced base, and we're, we're managing our expenditures as against that reduced base of revenues, but we are substantially lower than we had been in prior fiscal years. So I just, I just want to remind us of that context as we think about our planning for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Going to throw it out there, we need to turn Bay Street into a giant cannabis mall. It's the only way. It's just the spirit of the day.
I was going to say today's four twenty. City Manager, thank you for uh pointing that out. I started to, you know, think about, okay, we can survive in this totally lean condition, but yeah, we can only do that so long.
Member Pats?
Uh, no, I just had a comment on all the hippie lettuce conversation, but I realize it's not relevant, and I'm just the old cranky guy, so I'll go back on mute.
All right, but I, eh, it, I, I still do want to thank staff for um uh really managing those um, those prudent short-term projections, which um why, you know, when we get these short-term updates, it's impressive to see that the numbers haven't moved much from, from our dire predictions, and they were dire, but um they were very much um accurate in many ways. So um, seems like our discussion is through.
It looks like Mr. Farmer has maybe one last comment to make.
Oh, yes, please. Go ahead, Brad.
Um, thank you, and um, thank you, um, Ms. City Manager. Um, I, I really want to, I know I gave a positive out, uh spin on that, and I, as I heard everybody talking, I did want to step in and just, just make sure that I really reiterate, these are all revenues that are down, and I was talking against the base that was there, and as um Ms. Daniels, you know, let us know, we're definitely not out of the woods, and I, I want to make sure that I'm really strongly saying that there's still a lot of work to be done, and this is something that we're going to have to pay attention to, and I think it's going to take a couple of years to, to get back to where we were. And uh without, without that attention to it, and without that, um, you know, savings, the city has been very great about putting aside monies that are potentially there to be used. Um, but I definitely want to make sure that everybody here, um, at least hearing from me, that this is, we're not out of the woods, and um we're doing better than we, we projected that we would. to begin the year, but we're, we're still, we're, we're in the fight for the long haul, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right, if there are no more questions or comments, I'll be happy to entertain a motion on the resolution.
I move the resolution.
Second the resolution.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Donahue and a second by Member Bowders. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. And that brings us to item twelve point three. This is a potential partnership with R C D for affordable housing, for the Affordable Housing for Sustainable Communities funding opportunity to support Fortieth and San Pablo Bussa projects and thirty-six-hundred San Pablo Avenue Apartments project. So this is an interesting collaboration with Affordable Housing and Public Works Projects. So who, who can I turn to?
Madam Mayor, Chad Smalley, I believe, will be making the presentation. We have a short presentation. The, the Transportation Committee heard this presentation, but I think it would benefit the full council to give you an overview, Mr. Smalley.
I, and, and I apologize, actually Valerie is, is teed up to do this. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it to her if she's on the line.
Excellent, she's here. Thank you, Valerie.
You're welcome. I do have a, a short presentation. Sheriff, if you could pull that up for me, please.
Moment. It's doing this weird layering thing, so one moment, and I'll see if I can get it better visible. How's that?
That works for me.
Okay, good. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Valerie Bernardo with the Department of Community Development. And I'm here presenting in collaboration with our Public Works Department on, on a funding opportunity called the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program. And the acronym for it is ASIC, so you'll hear me refer to it as ASIC instead of staying the long name. Next slide, please. So the ASIC Funding Program invests in affordable housing and capital improvement projects that generate G H G emission reductions. So there's two requirements to this partnership. One, we have to have an affordable housing project. And two, there has to be some type of capital improvement project. Eligible capital improvement projects include housing-related infrastructure, sustainable transportation infrastructure, as well as transportation-related amenities. We are in the sixth cycle of the ASIC Funding Program that comes down from the State of California's Housing and Community Development Department. The NOFA for this sixth cycle was released on February twenty-sixth, and it has about a four-month turnaround time for the application. That application is due on June eighth, twenty twenty-one. As I mentioned, it is a two-part program. The first part actually provides funding for a housing project, and those funds are provided in the form of a loan. And the second component is the funding for that capital improvement project, and those funds are provided in the form of a grant. There are some very specific requirements related to the funding. One of the biggest is that at least fifty percent of the funding that's requested must support the housing-related project. Within this current cycle, there is an expenditure deadline in which the funds that are awarded must be expended by November of twenty twenty-seven. And there also is an option to get a two-year extension that would extend the ability of expending those funds until November twenty twenty-nine. The terms of the loan that would be provided for the housing project are subject to the conditions that are imposed by H C D. And so every year, H C D would identify what those regulatory agreements are. We would have copies of those regulatory provisions today, but I did wanna make sure that everybody was aware that it is very possible that those requirements could change from year to year. And we won't know until we get, until H C D produces them, what the, what the actual end result will be. The city has partnered on this ASIC application in the past. We did that with E A H Housing on the Estrella Vista Project, and also supported a median landscaping improvement project that occurred along Fortieth Street. At this time, R C D has come to the city and has, is looking for our support for our new funding application to support thirty-six-hundred. And we have been working collaboratively with our Public Works Department to try to identify what kind of bike and pedestrian improvement project would be suitable for this very competitive application. Next slide, please. So what has been proposed and what we've tried to put together is a joint application that would combine resources, resources for community development, the developer of thirty-six-hundred San Pablo, the City of Emeryville, as well as BART. It would be about a twenty point two million dollar grant loan application in which about ten point one million dollars would be made available for thirty-six-hundred San Pablo Avenue. Three point eight million dollars would be available for pedestrian and bicycle improvements along Fortieth Street in the form of a grant. There's an additional five point eight million dollars that would be made available to acquire an additional BART train, as well as doing some improved lighting and transportation improvements around the MacArthur Train Station. And then about five hundred thousand dollars that would be made available to do tenant bicycle education for the residents at thirty-six-hundred San Pablo, as well as provide transit passes for those residents. Next slide, please. So you guys have been very familiar with the thirty-six-hundred San Pablo project. We came back before the city council in January of twenty twenty-one. And the city council at that time did authorize an additional fourteen million dollars in funding, bringing the city's total commitment to sixteen point seven million dollars to this affordable housing project. It's a quick reminder, the project is eighty-nine affordable housing units, of which thirty percent would be set aside for permanent supportive housing for formerly homeless individuals. The site will also be the future home of E cap. The total project development cost for this site is seventy-one million. So with the sixteen point seven million dollar commitment from the city, that does provide a significant amount of resources, but there's a lot of funding that's still needed to fill that gap. R C D has applied for another funding opportunity through H C D through their No Place Like Home. We're currently awaiting a decision on that application. And then this funding application has come before us, which would provide about ten, a little bit over ten million dollars to help fill this funding gap. On the capital improvement project side related to the city, we are looking at pedestrian, bike and pedestrian improvements along Fortieth Street. There's a series of pedestrian improvements. And I'm gonna quickly identify what those are and show you some of the images of what those would be. But I do have Mary Grace that's available to answer any very specific questions that might arise from the council regarding the project. So some of those improvements would include a two-way separated bikeway along the north side of Foria Street, starting down near the IKEA entry and going along Fortieth Street to Horton Street. There would also be multimodal intersection improvements at the Fortieth Street and Horton Street intersection. There would be a new Class One bicycle and pedestrian pathway between Halleck Street and Hubbard. A new Class One, three, and four bikeway on Halleck Street from Beach Street to Horton Landing Park at the Sherwin Avenue, allowing for future connection to the Beechwood and Mandela Connector. We would have new improved sidewalks along Halleck Street and Hubbard Street. There would be a new sidewalk landscaping expansion area around the plaza at the Bay Trail entrance near the ShellMound and IKEA intersection. And then we would also have the ability of having a bus-only travel lane along Fortieth Street from ShellMound near the IKEA entrance, entrance down to Horton Street. Next slide, please. This is a rendering showing near the IKEA intersection going along the Fortieth Street Bridge over down towards the Target. And if you go to the next slide, please, you'll see those other transportation improvements that are near Halleck and Horton Street. Next slide. So the Department of Community Development and Public Works did present before the Transportation Committee on April eighth. And we did receive full support from that committee. We are requesting today your support on moving forward with this potential partnership for this funding opportunity to support both thirty-six-hundred San Pablo, as well as the bicycle and pedestrian improvements along Fortieth Street. And if we're able to receive your support today, we will come back to you guys next month and actually see authorization to submit the application in time for the June eighth deadline. With that, I'm available to answer any questions. And again, Mary Grace is also available if there's any specific questions on the pedestrian bike improvements along Fortieth Street.
Colleagues, any clarifying questions? Nope, doesn't appear so. And that was the end of the presentation, correct, Valerie?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So I'll check in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted any public comments electronically. And we'll take a look at our attendee list to see if anyone has their hands raised.
No comment cards. We do have a new commenter. Try him first. Brian Donahue, go ahead and unmute. You have three minutes.
Let's not, let's always remind ourselves that the Fortieth Street Bridge improvements, while they are improvements for certain things, for other things, they have, they're going to make life worse for a certain segment of the population. And that segment is bicyclists. As it stands right now, there is a huge amount of realism between the bicyclists and the motorists. Ever since we closed down two automobile lane, travel lanes back ten years ago or so. And we have the hashed huge, essentially, it's almost an entire vehicle lane. So it's like probably ten feet between the moving vehicles and the bicycles. And so that's really nice for bicycling. What we're changing it to is as fast-moving vehicles much closer to the bicyclists. And so that is not as good. I mean, universally recognized as not as good. What you want is distance. And so it's not an improvement for bicycling. For, I would say, for all other modes of transportation, it's an improvement. But, you know, it's, this is not, this is not a freebie. It comes at a cost. And no one seems to ever acknowledge that. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Speaker. Sherry, it looks like there is another phone number with a hand raised.
Yes. Phone number with the last digits, three nine two one, if you would like to unmute and make your comment, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Jake Rosen. I'm a project manager at Resources for Community Development, the developer for thirty-six-hundred San Pablo Avenue Apartments. I'm just here to speak in favor of this resolution. This is gonna be a really important source of funding for this affordable housing development. And so thank you, staff, thank you, Valerie, for that presentation. I'm here to answer any questions related to the housing.
Okay, thank you, Jake. And then, Sherry, do you just wanna give it, an attempt to unmute the person who is attending on iPad?
Yes. Okay, if you're calling in on your iPad, now is your time to speak.
All right, and they've lowered their hand. So I'll bring that back to our colleagues. Thank you for tuning in, everybody. And any discussion or questions from my colleagues? Member Bowders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, I just think it's really exciting that we have this opportunity to do this. When I think about how cities try to comprehensively create sustainable and livable communities, this is an excellent example of that. This is a housing project that we all agreed to pursue, which went back to acquiring an underused and property, which is gonna create a full-time home for E cap. It's gonna create permanent supportive housing for the homeless in an upzoned section of San Pablo that leverages housing funds and brings more housing to the community. And with that, there's this opportunity to pull down ASIC money, which, as was discussed, goes to transportation projects in part. And this is gonna match up great with good planning we did for the San Pablo Fortieth Street Hub and Fortieth Street redesign. And so we're gonna get the first part of it potentially paid for and start at the West End, which I think is brilliant. The Transportation Committee loved it. I would just note for the public commenter, who was concerned, I just wanna, wanna flag a couple of things. I really appreciate the comment about the larger amount of separation between a vehicle and a bicycle. And as someone who bicycles around the city all the time, I understand what the, the commenter is referring to. That being said, the, the amount of debris that spills out onto the far side of that bridge is very dangerous for bicyclists. It's treacherous for, for mobility. Also, bicyclists who are traveling from ShellMound onto eastbound Fortieth Street. I've, I've had conversations with people in the last two weeks alone who have either had near misses or fallen off their bicycle from people turning right in front of them into the Target or pulling out quickly to try and beat traffic in front of them. So bicyclists aren't very visible going down that long K-rail piece of the, the bridge. And so moving the bicyclist to the inside of the curve, where there will actually be a physical concrete separator between the cars. The cars and their centrifugal force are moving faster at an outward pace. They're not moving into the curve. And it's also not going to produce debris with the separated space inside the, the bike space. So we're actually creating a more family-friendly movement across that, which connects people to the Bay Trail. So I, I appreciate the comments, but I just wanna say that the design is, is, is a good one. I wanna thank the staff for also looking at the opportunity to link this up to the south end of the Greenway so that we actually can build a full network. And with that, I just would turn it over to our chair from Transportation for further comment.
Member Medina?
Thanks so much. I agree wholeheartedly. I was really excited to see this grant application that I think ties together some of the things we care the most about here in Emeryville. Though I was disappointed because my initial reading, I thought we were getting a decommissioned BART car, not like another BART car to be working on the train, and I was really excited about it. It's what you get for reading too fast and projecting what you want. Right?
Where were you gonna put it?
I've got a lot of ideas. Think of what a cool bus stop that would be. My, you know, regar- I mean, hell, we could put a dispensary in there. But regarding the, the public comment, I, I agree with Councilmember Bowders. Just in terms of doing evidence-based policymaking, this is a fantastic design because that intersection with bikes coming down the hill to Target is one of our highest collision zones in town. We are working to eliminate a danger that we know is present and to prevent future incidents and collisions between cyclists and pedestrians and cars in what we know to be a high incident area. This is good policymaking. It is not, you know, it wasn't done randomly. It was done very specifically to protect people the best way we can. And a best practice to protect bicyclists is to give them a physical barrier. That is what makes people of all ages and ability levels, from myself, who rocks a single speed and does like three miles around town, to Councilmember Bowders, Road Warrior, and Spandex. You know, everyone on that spectrum, make them feel comfortable moving around town. And I just wanna note, for the record, that in the staff report on page five, number four, it says new Class Three bikeway on Halleck Street from Beach Street to Horton Landing Park, Sherwin Avenue. That's not entirely accurate. That does imply a possibility of a share, which you know I'd rather self-immolate than make any more of those. The exhibit is correct when it says a Class One, three, or four bikeway on that path. That is what's going in the application. I clarified that with staff.
Thank you, Member Medina. Any further comments? I just wanted to check in with staff on, I, I too am intrigued and pleased at the ability to leverage housing and transportation dollars to improve our community in multiple ways. But I, I just wonder what the direction is that you need from us this evening.
So Madam Mayor, tonight, what we're asking is for the support of the council so that R C D knows that it's worthwhile to commit the time and energy, and frankly, staff does, to putting the application together. And then we would be coming back to you for a resolution to approve the application.
Right.
I failed at my job. The Transportation Committee unanimously recommends the city council support to this application.
Is there any objection to recommending, to the support of this application? There is no objection from the city council.
Madam Mayor, if I could just ask, Ms. Bernardo, was there any need for the council to, to make a motion, take an action from R C D?
I'll move the item.
I'll second the item.
All right, so we have a motion from Member Medina and a second from Member Bowders in support of this partnership with R C D to request funding from the ASIC program. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowders?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, that was Harlan.
He can talk, too.
Yes. Okay, thank you for this item, staff. And that moves us to item twelve point four. And this is in conjunction with an item we already passed at our Mesa meeting, that was Mesa Agenda Item seven point one. This is a resolution of the, the city council of the City of Emeryville approving and consenting to an agreement of employment between the management of Emeryville Services Authority and Andrea Visvishwara as interim of employment between the management of Emeryville Services Authority and Andrea Visvishwara as interim city attorney slash general counsel for the period of April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one through October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And I think we can waive the report on this since we've already heard this item. Um, are there any public comments, uh, submitted electronically or hands raised, Madam City Clerk?
There are no comment cards and no raised hands.
Very good. Bringing it back to, um, council, I will take the privilege of making, um, a motion on the resolution.
And I'll second it.
And seeing no further discussion, please, uh, the, a motion for myself and a second for Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. Passes unanimously, which brings us to item twelve point five. And similarly, this was already heard during our Mesa meeting earlier this evening. That was Mesa Agenda Item Number Seven Point Two. This is item twelve point five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving and consenting to an agreement of employment between the management of Emeryville Services Authority and Michael Geena as city attorney slash general counsel for the period of July first, twenty-eighteen through July thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and from August first, twenty-twenty through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And to remind folks, this was just a cleanup item, um, to, uh, make sure that the contracts all matched with our, um, payroll schedule. So I will, unless there are any questions, I'll check with our city clerk to see if there are any submitted pu- uh, public comments on this item or any hands raised.
No comments and no raised hands.
Thank you. I'll close public comment on this item, and I will go ahead and move the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for myself, a second for Member Pats. And, um, seeing no further comments, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina? Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye. That passes unanimously. I don't see any listed department head reports, but you don't?
We have them this evening, Sherri.
Very good. Thank you very much. That takes us to item fourteen, Future Agenda Items and Requests from Council Members. Member Bouters?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two items I'd like to request for Future Agenda. Uh, one would be for the next meeting, if possible. It's just to take a position on a piece of legislation. Um, I believe we've previously discussed in the prior years, the Surplus Lands Act, and there was legislation, um, to make it available for affordable housing. There was a loophole discovered, um, that some cities have been exploiting to avoid actually processing surplus lands for affordable housing. So consistent with just prior stuff, Assembly Bill Twelve Seventy-One by Filting, um, and sponsored by the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California, who is, um, supporting us in our bill, SB Five Ninety-One. So I would just like to ask if there's support to just take a position on this. They reached out to me today in our discussions and asked for a letter, and I told them I would bring it up.
Yes, very good. Yes, and, uh, you have our support.
Okay, and the other item is, um, I, I feel really ignorant because I didn't recognize this before. There, um, there, in many cities in the nineteen-sixties and seventies, passed bicycle license registration requirements. Um, those were originally intended, or at least they were put out to people as being there to, um, essentially help identify a bicycle that was stolen. And so you registered your bike so that if it was stolen, the police couldn't, and the police recovered it, they could, um, return it to you. We have that on the books. We actually have a bicycle license. You have to have a license plate on your bicycle. You have to register your bicycle. I bet Scott doesn't even know that that's something he's been around since the ordinance was passed in nineteen-seventy-eight. You have one, Scott?
No, you have a little bike one that says Evil in your office. I saw it.
This is, no, this is like a city-issued thing.
Yeah, no, this different alley. No, don't have it.
No, so.
I didn't even know Emeryville required it.
Yeah, we do. It's under, or Chapter One, Section Point Oh Three. And so there's a, there's a small series of statutes there related to the registration. Most of them are preempted now by state law. Most of these things we don't actually need to do, but, um, so it turns out that Bike East Bay and Calbike are both, have been both trying to get cities to repeal these because they're used as a pretense to pull over black and brown people and people, and they become a basis for why people get stopped, and you can actually, um, have your bicycle taken away. And in fact, there's video that's, um, uh, viral on about that happening in New Jersey, where some, some young black men were bicycling. Um, they had a conversation just decided to seize their bikes because they didn't have licenses and, and tags. Um, and so what I'd like to do is I would just like us to put on the agenda a review of that title and chapter, um, because I think if the staff came back, they could tell us, we could probably erase it since most of it is preempted by law, and we don't have a reason to have this. There are nine cities in Alameda County that have it, and I would like us to not be one of them.
Support.
Support.
Thank you.
Great, that will be coming back. Does anyone else have any future agenda items? Um, I would just like to, uh, get support to officially refer, um, the issue brought forward by the, um, public commenter who was concerned about the Fifty-third Street traffic circle, um, and send that to Transportation Committee for consideration. So can I get support on that issue? Great, thank you. And I want to thank the, um, public commenter for sending that our way. Um, with no other future agenda items from council members, I have a request to adjourn this meeting in honor of someone. Member Medina, did you want to say anything?
Um, I don't have anything prepared, but I think it would be appropriate, um, this evening to adjourn in memory of George Floyd. You know, I think there's been a lot of beautiful things said about it. I, I don't have too much to add. I think it was a really important day in our community for many people. And the fact still remains that George Floyd is dead today, and just want to recognize that.
Thank you. So, um, we will be adjourning this meeting in honor of George Floyd, who was taken from us too soon, um, less than a year ago, um, which we all very clearly remember. So the time is nine-thirty-five. And, um, thank you all for your attendance, and thank you, Mr. Geena, for your last meeting.
Bye-bye, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Night. Thanks, Sherri.
Good night.